Does anyone have any agenda changes? I don't.
I don't have anything new for you. I do have one piece of correspondence at the end, but we have that as an agenda item.
All right. No, no audience, so it looks like no public comments. And so let's move on to number three, which is the village mapping exercise that John's John set up for us.
Sort of.
For design ideas.
What would you like me to put up on screen, John, if anything, or do you want to talk first?
No, why don't you put the first image up?
First, okay.
Yeah. A little background. The main reason I felt I wanted to talk about these kind of things is from my experience in the planning department in Boston involving much more densely built Boston, 630 acres with about 60,000 people in it. But we went through a process of, after having been rejected with a plan prepared at City Hall, the redevelopment authority reconstituted a design team, and I was hired into that design team. And we went to the community. We actually had a site office right in the area we were working in. And we spent about a year talking to people about what they thought their neighborhood was about, what was important, how it worked, what didn't work. We met with people in their living rooms. We had a staff of about eight, and we would split up time, and we'd spend an evening or two a week sitting in somebody's living room, and they'd get neighbors together. Sometimes it was a church meeting room. Sometimes it was somebody's living room. And we talked about what was important to them. And out of that created a very simple diagram of the important elements. And I'm talking about a diagram, arrows and circles and marks and colors. Nothing that looked like anything built, nothing that said this is the elevation or this is the footprint. It was very, very diagrammatic. And out of that, after another couple of years, we were able to develop a plan that was quite specific, block by block, parcel by parcel. So I'm thinking of a similar kind of process here now, three decades later, from when I was working on it first off, three or four decades. And we've got ways to communicate, the television, the internet, our own Facebook page, all of those kinds of things I think we can use. But at this point, I felt we needed to back away from the housekeeping things that we'd just completed. That's really nitty gritty, in the trenches kind of stuff. And I'd like to see a broader view, back away from all of that for the moment, and look at the entire village in a much more conceptual way. So this is, I grabbed some of the maps that Alex has used over the years and decided to show a few of them first off. I'm going to turn the lights off.
Got it.
Oh, great. And not that you guys haven't seen these maps before. I wanted to turn it on its side just to give us a little bit of a different look of how we think about Heinsburg. We've always looked at our maps with north on the top. I find it interesting to change the orientation of something. Obviously, here's 116 going through, but it's mostly horizontal in that configuration. This is, doesn't have a label on it, but the blue, you can figure out, is residential. The red is commercial. The green are public, so that can be school, that can be a church, town hall. Somehow, that doesn't jump out, but it's there. This is looking downhill in my mind. Water is coming this way. You can see the topography. So let's look at the next one. I think the next one is just, and these are not necessarily the most important ones or anything, but there's the same thing with the buildings, obviously, much more prominent. This is not, this is the one we changed the building size on?
Yes.
Right. These are just representative squares. They're not indicating that's how big the building is. And I did one, and I actually have it over here. I had Alex do it, where I made the squares all much smaller, basically to avoid this kind of solid blue that shows up. It's not a good rendition of what's actually there. What's the next one look like, Alex? So I took that map that had the individual buildings on it and asked Alex, can you make that same color over the entire parcel? With the idea being, if there's a house on it, that whole parcel is going to be associated with that house. And it's not going to turn into some other use without going through a process. So again, the blue are the ground areas that are devoted to residential, red to commercial. And then now you begin to see bigger blocks that we've committed to different uses. There are some odd things that happen Alex and I were just talking about. There's a parcel that's here that is actually the Quinn parcel. This is not separated out. Do I have that right?
That's right.
Right. So there's a couple of houses here. So the protocol is, all of that gets colored residential. But that's not the case here. We can do something else different here. This is where the solar array is. So Alex chose, and I agree too, show that as commercial industrial. It's not going to turn into something different. This is Kelly's Field.
Yep.
Right? And that is very full of houses. So I've done this for me. It makes a difference to look at this different information shown a different way, and it stimulates my thinking about the town. What's the next one? Again, not necessarily all the important maps are being shown here, but this I found is an interesting one because it is a very quick view of where we're dealing with water. So there's streams and buffer areas and floodways and so forth. But anything that's colored through here is where the water moves through our town. You know, here's Patrick Brook coming down through here, and the canal going this way, and Patrick Brook going over here and under 116, and then spreading out obviously. Okay, what's the next one?
This is the last one.
Right. Now, this one, I want everybody to just sit for a minute and look at this. And after a few minutes, let's talk about what you would like to say about what you experience, what you conclude, what stimulates you, what pops into your head when you're looking at this map of Heinsburg, backing away from the individual stuff. What's important to you for any number of reasons, whatever it is? And then we can talk about that a little bit.
This aerial photo is from 2013, so it's a little dated, but...
But we've got the beginning of the Kenny Drug area out there. That's started. There you can see the solar array.
Say that again? What you just said?
Here is the Kenny Drug area. So the beginning of that is happening. The house is right here, right there.
Yep.
And here's the solar array I was talking about. So that's a pretty good, up-to-date picture of our town. I don't know how far back off we are, but basically, we can see everything. For me, when I first looked at this, I was struck by all the blue lines, all the water moving through here. Pretty much covers all of the village. I mean, even up at this end, we've got water flowing through the village. So Maggie, what strikes you? And I'm thinking we all learn about what each other is thinking about in broad terms about our village.
I find it interesting, just the variety of neighborhoods. You know, the older neighborhoods along 116, houses closer to the road, then the cluster up by Farmall Drive, Lemon Meadows. Thistle Hill, I see, isn't quite built out in that one.
Right. There's a blank area that's filled now.
It's funny, what stands out for me are the Friendship Lane, the longer driveways there. And that doesn't really fit in with the, I guess, the closer to the road development that I see elsewhere.
Good, good. How about you? Great? A lot of empty space, which is nice. You know, the woodlands, you know, down like all the way down. But what I find interesting, what I noticed, was how some of these houses, you know, we talk about following the terrain. I never even realized how much, you know, they're kind of at the foothills of that. Because I know that's elevated there, but how it kind of weaves around. I would say, I agree with Maggie. Like, I didn't realize how big this is compared to, just visually, it seems like it's, even though when you really look at it, the buildings are not bigger or anything. But it definitely is different than everything else, you know?
What is different, Jeff?
Just that you've got, you know, the old row here of house, 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 and then you've just got this up here. Off of 116, there's just this grouping. And I guess even, you know, the Thistle Hill a little bit. Sorry. It's kind of, not that that's bad. It's just, you know, things that I notice right away, just glancing, you know? And I'm not saying one is right or wrong. It's just things I've noticed. Yeah.
I'm thinking the houses were closer to the road back then because it was a dirt road. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
If it was now, and there was 116, and they were going to build a house, they probably wouldn't have built this so close.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, it was the, the road was much narrower, and there was actually more green space between the houses and the road.
Yeah, the travelway was small.
Yeah, I mean, there wasn't more near as much traffic here than anything.
Looks like a hub of roads coming together and waterways.
Ralph, you got any things popping your...
Well, what's interesting to me is the sort of boundary of the village district and growth area. And the sort of complete lack of correlation between, well, complete is not entirely accurate. There's certainly some places where there's a geographic or geologic feature that also happens to be the boundary of the village. But, you know, there's a lot of terrain there that suggests a kind of rugged, hard-to-build-on nature, and yet it's sort of within the village district, so to speak. So that doesn't mean anything, really. It just means that, hey, that combined with water and other sort of natural features and resources, what is sort of like actually buildable, you know? And...
Like behind NRG, I think there's like three or four lots approved.
Yeah, yeah, on that hilltop, yeah.
Right.
And it seems as if, yeah, it seems like probably those boundaries adhere more to property lines, perhaps, than anything else.
That's exactly how they were drawn. They were drawn to follow parcel lines to the extent possible.
And that sort of allegiance is probably not rational, you know? Well, rational on some levels, but not rational in terms of, hey, how one might use the land. That's maybe the biggest observation. I'd be, it's not a big observation. It's just an observation, for heaven's sake.
That's pretty big. Big as any one of us. Marie, how about you? What jumps out at you?
Look, for sure, the waterways, which I didn't know that's what they were until you told me, John, about all the blue. But, you know, to me, and I can't believe I'm saying this, it just doesn't look like it's very densely populated and that there's a lot more room for growth, looking at it in this picture. I never thought that way, looking at it, driving by, John. You know, so your idea of putting it like this is kind of poor. I'm looking at it differently than I ever have before. It just doesn't seem very densely populated. There's...
So this is what is here now. And I wanted to take this map as the base, mostly just to represent the village, not the details. And so we can have the lights. So this is the same map. And underneath, you can see peeking out the village. We've got a little line that we've defined. And this is it again. And this is the one that shows the residential and commercial and public areas covering the entire parcel when they are used by that use. What I thought we could do, and I do have a bunch of magic markers, and maybe this will reveal something or not, but what I thought we could do is all try to think about 20 years from now as how we see our village. What from now becomes our future 20 years from now? Some things, I think we can all agree, won't change. 116 will still do that. I think this road will still do that. I think this road will still do that. As you all know, if this continues, they meet, cross, go off into the other villages. There's the Charlotte Road. There's Silver Street. And the one other area that I marked as a prominent road, in my mind, was Commerce Drive. So I don't think any of that's going to go away in 20 years. So in my thinking, that's got to be part of the skeleton of our future town. What do we do with that? We've talked about doing some things already. Maybe or maybe not, we'll do them. We talked about, we'll propose them. We talked about having some kind of, here's Patrick Brook, having some kind of green something that goes all along here, all the way to CVU Corner. And so what I'm thinking is, each of us, with the activity, the use that you feel is important particularly to you, how do we deal with the other things we've talked about? Maggie, you made a list of, what did we call it? What did she call them?
Sort of the focus areas for developing design standards.
You had Route 116. You had architecture as one of the items and so forth. So if we think about those areas, how do we build on what we've got? I'll take the opportunity to make some suggestions. Here's Commerce Street. All of that is, right now, commercial. But we talked about changing it over to be more mixed. So in terms of an illustration, to talk to the town about our idea, we might come up with a way of illustrating this as a combination of commercial and residential. Without defining building shapes or heights or what the elevations look like, but merely this area of town is going to get more diverse in the future. We're going to try to do things to bring a mixture of activities to that area. By contrast, we've got parts of town already where Lantman's is, is a concentration. And there are a few offices along the sides. The same here. The same on this side. We get down to this corner. And again, we've got a lot of commerce. How can we best show that that's the current pattern? This is part of a new pattern. Are we talking about, thinking about having residences, for the most part, back here, behind this green area? And in fact, maybe the entire area is essentially residential? I know there's playfields at the back end of it. Or are we talking about mixing in commerce along there? Is there a way to show people that's what we have in mind? No building shapes, no building heights, just the idea that that's an area of mixed activity of residential and commercial? What other areas do you think we should try to, what other concepts should we try to pass on to the village, particularly the village residents, but all residents, and get some kind of conversation going on between them? I know that Maggie's, you've gone out with some of these very maps and set out at a table and asked people questions about the town, where they live, and things like that. What are the most important places in town for any one of us? If I ask you all one place that's the most important place for you in town, in the village, where would that be? What would that be? What place would that be? And why was that place the most important? Some people might mark up the church, the Catholic Church, and say, that's the most important place in town for me. And it's because I'm very involved at the church and because I do a lot of things at the church. So what other aspects of our town are important to each of you?
Well, green space. And, you know, one of those things we're going to talk about is green space and connecting, you know, the connecting green space. Yeah.
So what do we do about, how do we show that? Do we show, we've got green space over here where the school is?
The playing fields behind Lantman's, the fields, behind the town hall, the fields.
We've got fields in here. We've got fields back in here. We've got proposed fields out there. A lot of activity. We've got connecting trails, connecting paths, connecting sidewalks. Again, I'm thinking about 20 years from now. So what's in place in 20 years? Have we, in fact, a running path that goes all the way out to these fields? Do we do a connection along this side of 116 as well as this side? We've just gotten permission to build a sidewalk through this wetland and go all the way out to that corner. So so far, we've got green space. And that includes all that kind of movement that we've talked about, walking, biking, running, cross-country skiing on some of the more remote trails. We've talked about controlling where we want to encourage residents. We've talked about where we want to see commerce. And what I imagine is that we develop a clear, simple graphic illustration of these activities and the other ones that we want to include in the village and use that to get responses from as many people as we can get involved. I realize that the 5,000 of us who are here are, we're not going to get most of those folks. But there will be people who are interested. And I'd like to see us go out into the community, which may be by the V-CAM folks, but it also may be meetings with different groups. The churches in town, for me, are a natural group that already exists and would be interested in this town enough to come to a meeting and talk about these kinds of things. So...
So John, before you, like what was fascinating about some of the earlier images that you showed up, I liked the fact that you sort of turned it on its head a little bit, or at least went from up to down, so to speak, or down to up. But just like the roads, in fact, perhaps even more so, the bones of the community, so to speak, you know, yeah, I think the roads play a part in that. I think these watercourses, you know, that were delineated here, really play a role in that. I think the protection of those watercourses, you know, the swaths of land that come along those watercourses that enable us to protect those water sources and keep them, you know, doing what they're naturally supposed to do. And in a like manner, you know, some of the terrain, the just severity of the terrain, you know, the stuff behind James's house. You know, I think all of those natural, combined with the sort of, call it man-woman-imposed stuff like roadways, I think they form together, sort of the bones that enable us to then start marking some of the things that you're marking on here now. And I think to really have a strong diagram that shows all of those different elements, and maybe there's more, I don't know, and how they link together. Because I think the importance of those, say, the waterways, you know, those are natural places for us to sort of gently walk. you know, those are natural places for us to sort of gently walk, use with care. But there are always going to be sort of pathways, probably not just for those of us who live here, but also, you know, some of the wildlife that still migrates around the village. So I think to really have those, all of those things that constitute those bones, and not to assume that the roads necessarily assume superiority over those other systems, is maybe a good place to start the kind of conversation, rather than make assumptions about, you know, okay, and we're going to have a green swath along here, and even though that's my sort of bias also, you know. And just geographically, I mean, you know, you look at that map, and it's the place the village lives, but you know, the kind of centered nature. I mean, you look at that drawing on the right, and the sort of boundaries of the village, and you kind of see, okay, where's the heart of this? Where's the center of this? And you know, it's very much Commerce Park, you know, just by virtue of where we set the other boundaries, I guess. And so it says something about growth in that area, or change, or evolution. So, you know, that's all I was observing, really.
There's a, I saw this. It doesn't show up on this. Yeah, it's just another one of the big maps with the water areas, the wet areas. But if you focus on just the outline, just the shape of the village's growth area, and particularly when it's this way, I kept seeing this animal. I kept seeing like a pig or a hog, you know? Here you've got the hocks, back here, and the front legs and the head. And I had this image of, here's 116 bringing all of this stuff into our town, and here's this very solid animal shape that's going to, you know, deal with what's coming down 116. Just a curious...
Yes. I'll make this observation to you guys, not to talk too much, but, you know, I'm an architect, and so I think buildings are great things, you know? It's sort of in my educated nature. But the reality is, from my perspective, is it's not about the buildings, you know? They're secondary players, really. It's about the spaces in our communities that serve all of us, you know? And oftentimes, that's public space of some kind or another. And if you look at sort of historically somewhat admirable places to live, what do most of those places have? They have fantastic community spaces, and that are really clearly defined. You know, to go to Chelsea-Vermont, what other town, in your recall, has a pair of town greens that sit right next to one another, paired up, you know, with a couple of really nice noble public buildings around them? And I don't mean to romanticize that, because you can do that too. But, you know, and you can get into the bigger cities, and they're not necessarily always good examples for what we're talking about in Heinsberg. But we don't, I think the clear definition of the kind of public space or realm is really what the community spirit, configuration, form sort of hangs off of. And sometimes, you know, the making of that community space is in fact directly responsive to some of these natural circumstances that we're just stuck with or endowed with in our village, you know? The watercourses and the green spaces along them. So I think that community space thing is, I'm not wording it very well, is something that's really important to the longer-term development of our village. That, you know, you know, we've talked about that in the official map and some other things, but kind of, for better or for worse, I think it's one of the things that sort of the whole Hannaford controversy sort of stepped up. I mean, if you look at that little white space sitting right there in the middle, it definitely is kind of a little focus, and I don't mean to get political on us in any way whatsoever, but we don't really have that public living room. Let me put it that way.
No, I think that many of the public spaces, the larger green spaces, when it comes to public spaces, unlike Chelsea, which I'm looking at on Google, title I view now, many of Heinsberg's are on the periphery. So the fields behind this building have lots and lots of activity, and kids playing soccer and all that, but it's on the edge of the village, on this edge. The Bissinat Recreation Area that we're in the process of building is very much on the edge. In fact, it's outside of the growth area, it's adjacent to it. The Russell Trails are very much on the edge of the village, and it's those hills that rise up away from it. The Community School is on the edge, CBU and all of its green spaces are on the edge. Lyman Park is not on the edge, but it doesn't have life when it's not being used for a particular activity.
And I would say the same for the fields back here, even for the community fields. I mean, I think, I like that observation. Also, we think of the trails up in the town forest and over into Praggs, and we have a, you know, we are rich in that kind of public space. But, you know, I often think of, you know, it's summertime, you want to grab a sandwich with a friend and have lunch in Heinsberg. Where are you going to go? Where are you going to meet?
Good times.
At the Paisley Hippo.
Paisley Hippo.
Outside.
You eat inside.
Yeah, you'll be inside.
So there is no community, shared community space. I mean, sure, if I want to play rugby, I've got a place to go. But if I want to sit quietly with a couple of friends or have lunch outside with someone, where am I going to go?
Well, the interesting thing in my mind is that, I think Ralph's right about the parcel Lot 15 where Hannaford's proposed. That was a central parcel, the commission identified it as a future community facility because of its centrality, and because none of us thought it could sustain much in the way of development. But that aside, we have one. We have another one, right now, it's called Lot 1, we refer to these things as lots. We own it, it's grassed, it's got two community facilities, buildings right next to it. They're not grand and beautiful, you know, old buildings, but they are the fire and the police station, and we are doing nothing with it. So, you know, I think we have the potential to have some of those spaces, but it requires investment, and it requires identifying other ones that will be more central and more lived in, as opposed to visited. And that's, I think that's a great topic of, great fodder for the conversation of these design standards with regard to green spaces in the expansion areas, in the Village Northwest, in the Village Northeast, Residential 1 districts.
One thing I would add is that the green spaces, the pathways, the connections between all these green spaces, all of that, I think, should be thought of just as much as the roads and the utilities as part of infrastructure. We have to consider, even though they're soft compared to the investment we've put into any one of our roads, any one of our sewer lines, our water lines, an open field doesn't have that same kind of investment, but its value is, in my mind, equal to any of these other harder, more costly infrastructure pieces that we've built so far. Mostly the roads and the utilities that go along with it. By the way, there's, of course, a power grid laid over this entire village that we don't have very much control of at all. We've talked about getting control of Main Street, and what does that mean? Does that mean that Heinsberg will own responsibility from CBU Corners to Buck Hill? All of that will be ours to take care of? And to define how it gets used, whether there's on-street parking, whether there's lighting, whether there's trees? Along with that is, how do we afford that? So any one of these ideas, in my head, has a dollar sign sitting out next to it saying, what do we have to spend in public money to do this? I'm not talking about what developers spend, and we may want to control what they spend on certain things. But what public money can be obtained to support any of these ideas? And that, again, in my past experience, that brings me back to getting the public to buy in to the ideas that we're presenting to them. And by bringing them along symbolically initially, and then in more detail with zoning regulations, design standards, those kinds of documents, we keep everybody with us. So when it comes time to pass a bond vote or to decide to have a five-year program to landscape the length of 116 that Heinsberg is responsible for, we have a group of people in town, not everybody, because everybody's not going to watch it that closely, but we've got a group of people in town who will support those ideas and speak for those ideas, and encourage the select board to put money into those ideas. So I just want to come back to, I think, for me, communication with our constituents is very important, and we need to do a better job at that than we've done so far. And that we need to keep our ideas, to begin with, simple. The concepts need to be understandable and agreeable to people. Ralph raised a question about, well, do we really need to consider, what I heard, do we really need to consider 116 quite as fixed an item for 20 years out as I initially drew it? Maybe not. Why would we change it? What would it take to make the change physically, financially? Those, that level of conceptual thinking, I think, is where we need to keep ourselves, even when we're in the trenches deciding about, well, where and how do we describe this new diverse mix of uses on Commerce Street? And the final thing that I keep thinking of is we need to involve some of the other committees and commissions in towns more directly in our work. We need to have a stronger connection to the Financial Committee and to the Village Steering Committee and to the Conservation Commission. Maybe one of us goes to one of their meetings every month and just touches base with them. Maybe we watch their minute meetings and their agendas more closely. But I think that kind of connection is, broadens our expertise, as it were. I'm not a financial person. I talk about wanting to bring jobs to Heinsberg. Well, how does that actually happen in the business world, in the industrial world? How, what brings jobs here? Well, let's talk to the people in the Financial Committee. So I don't have any other particular thing to say. I think this should be an ongoing point of view, not necessarily dominating our meetings each, every other week, but kind of in the back of your mind, what's that simple concept that we came up with for the whole town? And how do, what I'm working on right at the moment, how does it fit into that?
We also talked about a commercial core, and if we're still looking at that, how does that fit in? You know, because I know we talked about, when I look at it, the commercial core is kind of defined. But we did talk about, kind of defined, you can see the big pink slot right there, you know? But we did talk about that becoming more residential, which kind of goes against that commercial core. So I don't, just raising, it's things we got to think about.
We were, my wife and I were in Cambridge in Boston this weekend with friends in Cambridge, the Harvard, near the Harvard Square area. It's a very, very busy, busy place, late at night even. Obviously, there are many, many people who live there. Downtown Boston, at the same time, there's nobody there, because it's all offices. Offices and public institutions that are closed, churches, the State House. Very, very busy areas during the day, not so much at night. Not true of my friend's neighborhood near Harvard Square. People on bicycles, people walking, a bus system working till late in the night. We kept talking about a diverse, dynamic, walkable village. I think there's more activity we need to bring to the center of the village in particular before it's going to start feeling like it's a dynamic, you know, stuff happening on the streets. You know, let's go over to Good Times and have some pizza, and then walk up the street to listen to some music at a new club that opened up in the Commerce District area, Commerce Street. Those, how do we bring that kind of activity? I'm not a developer, I'm not going to finance a new club, but somebody might. And what do they want to see here? What do they want to think of Heinsberg? I mean, clearly Hannaford saw something about the Hannaford, the Heinsberg location. It's that wonderful traffic coming through on 116, right on our Main Street.
So what does Harvard Square have? What are those people going to?
Restaurants, bars. There's a couple of facilities that are part of Harvard that are actually open late at night, that are right in the mix of stores, right in Harvard Square. There's a tea station, there's an entrance-exit to the tea system right in Harvard Square. It has, there's enough open space on sidewalks and little parks that people can kind of hang out and talk. And for a long time, there were groups that would come and perform, you know, busking right in that central Harvard Square area.
I would see something like that, that would be in Burlington, you know?
It is the kind of thing that is in Burlington. I don't know whether we bring that kind of activity to our village.
We tend to roll up the carpet at 30.
Certainly now, but again, I'm talking about 20 years from now, 30 years from now. There, by that time, I think we're all saying, there's more housing. There is, there are more people who come and live here. They're around in the evening, they're here doing stuff. What if there were a gym with a swimming pool, for example, that was open until late at night? And you could come home from your work in town at your desk and have dinner and go work out, and play handball, or swim laps? That's the kind of stuff. And then there's a restaurant right next to that place. Or there's a field, I always had, it's just my idea, that out here are the proposed playfields. And I always had this idea that a road could go all the way out to there that would be a handy road for people to see from 116, and people in the village would know. And out there at the end of that road, overlooking those playfields, would be a couple of places to hang out, a restaurant, a bar. would be a couple of places to hang out, a restaurant, a bar, a bunch of benches, where you could take your 10-year-old and his friend to go practice soccer, and you could go have a cappuccino and even see the soccer playing going on. So putting those things together works. But do we have enough activity in Heinsberg to create them in the first place? We keep talking about mixed commerce and residential. What commerce are we attracting? Who, what developer? All of them have said, we can do as much residential as you'd like. We'll do that first. We're gonna build the houses out first before we're gonna commit to building multi-unit buildings or commerce space. At least that's what I've heard. That's been their response. So I think that's a hard nut to crack. How, how do we bring jobs and activity to our village? Do we want jobs and activity in our village? I very much would like to bring more jobs, you know, living wage kind of jobs. Jobs that make you feel good about going to work and what you do there. Now, I suppose some high school kid really enjoys loading grocery bags and, you know, competes in the fastest grocery bag filler contest that they have. But I'm, I'm talking about grown-ups' jobs. People who have kids and need to have a place to live.
That's already...
It's gonna have to be another dealer.com or something.
You know, from, from...
This, this little list, you know, that we all voted for?
Yep.
Even though not many of mine made it, it's a pretty damn good list, you know? And just trying to achieve these things and graphically representing some of them, or at least some of them that can be represented, you know? Is a pretty good little exercise. I mean, you, I didn't ever mean to suggest that we make, quote, significant modifications to the road network that exists in town. But I do think that we could make some modest nudges that alter a somewhat, I'll call it stagnant, pattern that currently exists and enlivens the entry to the village and some other things at the same time. But I, I do think if, if we were to take, you know, like number one, vibrant and connected green spaces within the village area. If we just did a map, a little like you've done, John, and just that map, all it did was focus on those green spaces, wherever they currently exist, and how they're linked currently. You know, whether it's a casual path, like exists, you know, behind James's house or a more formal sidewalk, and see how that kind of spider's web, you know, is currently working. I think that diagram tends to educate most of us and inform us a little bit about where, okay, yeah, Lot 1 seems like a great space to do these sorts of things. Or there may be some other place that really sort of pops out at you when, when you diagram that kind of information, you know? I also look at that map, you know, and just the pink, blue, green representation, you know? And I don't, I don't mean to sort of be too overbearing about this, but, you know, I kind of look at this area and all the pink stuff that's right there. And then I try to imagine this pink, this pink stuff scattered in other directions. And I don't know about you guys, but I don't see it, you know? I mean, even this stuff in here is pretty, you know? I mean, we got stuff that's pretty substantially underutilized, I would say, you know? When you, you know, we talked a little bit about this stretch of Route, Route 116. We, you know, some of the uses that exist in here currently, they're one-story, little metal buildings, store stuff that we don't need, you know? This is a pretty good concentrated area that I think could really stand, you know, at least I'm sort of talking about the second goal on our little sheet, I think. And I think if we sequentially go through some of those things and identify, you know, after we understand some of those infrastructure things that John talked about, the roads, the green spaces and how we connect them, the terrain and just the topography. I mean, there are things that are happening in places like this. There's a reason this is white, you know?
Yeah, and I think when we get to that discussion on the green space, I think doing, doing a map is a, is a great idea to visualize.
Commerce Park, why do you think the people put in storage units? You know, what would you, how would you get them to put something in different than that? What would, it had to be a market for it, right? I mean, I don't...
At some point, I mean, it's a little like some of the one-story shopping areas that we have in town. I think at some point, I'm not sure it's in the 20-year framework.
Yeah.
Somebody's gonna see a higher and better use.
There has to be some kind of demand for an activity. If I were a businessman, I wouldn't, you know, set up a lemonade stand in the middle of the Sahara Desert. You know, yeah, they need something to drink, but there's no one there.
But what you're talking about is more people, more residential, right?
More residential, and then job opportunities. How, I, I don't know. I mean, we've all talked about wanting, it's on the list several times, bringing activities like jobs in this town so we're not entirely a bedroom community. And that, that's, right now, there are many people who live in Heinsberg who work in Heinsberg. I know that, but...
You know, the, the Energy Proposed Park, you know, space for new businesses to start, for businesses to grow into. I think that's a good, that's a good start. And I think there's probably more demand for that.
I see north of Commerce Park being all pink. I mean, at least around NRG.
Yeah, that's what Maggie was saying. The, the master plan for that property includes a huge amount. It'll only turn a couple more blocks pink, but the actual square footage of space that they're proposing is enormous.
So do we want more of that?
Well, way back when, the thought was that that side of the road had better soils and more stable...
But I mean, above NRG, do we want that to be all pink?
Oh, north, north of NRG?
I think the proposal, the proposal was residential more once you went over that hill or covering that hill.
The zoning currently allows for a mix. And they mixed it by having it all on one side and residential all on the other.
It'd be very blue on one side and pink on the other.
The Quinn property jumps out at me, too. That makes me nervous. Because I think, as you know, it's for sale.
Yeah, and it's more than just that white. It's that whole blue part back there, too. Yeah.
No, the blue has sold across the road. Now the white is for sale. It's sold, where the houses were. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
The, the blue side of the street, if you look at the map.
That's sold.
That's sold.
Yeah. Just sold. Yeah, that's all sold now.
It actually goes all the way up and up to CBU Road.
This is, this is...
This is what I'm talking about, John, the white.
But that, that's still on the market, so to speak.
Yeah.
There's, there's some discussions about trying to do something to help access to the upper part of the cemetery along this...
I've heard they're actually giving some land to the cemetery, it's the rumor.
There's talk about they would donate.
Yeah, donate, like eight acres or so. Because they really need it at the cemetery. But anyway, that's just an area to, like, we haven't talked about that, but...
I know, all the more reason to move on with our discussions.
Yes.
And our one as well, because the other half of the property is...
Yeah.
What's the pink area there, you guys, on the lower left?
Is that the trail? I can't figure that either. Is it the trailer park?
I don't know what...
The pink is part of your farm?
The only structures on it are your, your farm, your, yeah, your greenhouses. Yes, assuming that they're, assuming that their buildings are that category.
Because I was confused, I thought maybe it was the...
No, I, I turned it red only because the only structures on it were non-residential structures.
Okay, got it. Is all of the rest of the white to the right of it, your farm also, James?
To the, to the boundary line, right?
Yeah. And below it, that's out of the...
Both sides, both, both sides of the village.
Yeah, okay.
Well, is any of that land, the development rights, been sold?
Yeah.
All the land that's white, that's not in the village district.
Not that, that part.
You should have a color there where you aren't gonna be able to do anything with it.
Right, yeah, it's no longer developable.
This map was a real quick decision to just take everything that had a building on it, spread it over the entire thing.
The map is terrific, you guys.
It's really a great map. I mean, I like the fact that, I mean, say, for example, that pink blob where NRG is. If you imagine those two blocks to the left and right, or to the left of it and above are pink. And then you start to imagine, you know, a lot more blue, I guess, and green, which is substantially, it seems like in the realm of possibility. Let me put it that way, I guess. I mean, you've got a, it may be underutilized, but you've got a pretty good little economic core adjacent there to NRG. And proportionally, at least just looking at it this way, and I know that's not the only way, it seems like, you know, to expand it much beyond that seems proportionally kind of odd to me.
I mean, like, what services can't you do in Heinsberg? I mean, what can't? I mean, most everything you can get done, right? You got the garage.
For the size of it, yeah.
Restaurant.
Yeah.
Couple restaurants, few restaurants.
Drugstore, grocery store, doctor's offices.
So what's, what's our, what's the next step? I mean, what's the next step with this? Do we just, you know, bring this map to every, to each of our discussions, maybe? You know, have, have a specific one for, for the green space?
We could start with the green space and the pathway connections between them and try to get a, a clean diagram of what that is in order to be able to talk to people, just about that component of our village.
Yeah, this one, I think we should bring, put this one up every meeting. I think that's a, I like that.
I tried to fiddle around and turn these so that they would read appropriately, but I, I didn't have the technology to do that.
Do you think people that live in the village have a different idea of what they would like the village to look like compared to the people that live outside of it?
It'd be nice to ask.
It's a good question.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I think that would be a good question to ask.
People that I know, I mean, it's a small sampling, but right, I know people that live, that I work with that live outside the village. And they see the village much different than, say, me, who lives in the village. They see it as a place of, I drive in and get my gas. I drive in and, you know, Hannaford, get my groceries. And, you know, they don't see it as a place to stop. I'll go to the restaurant and get takeout and take off. Whereas I like the ability to walk. You know what I mean? And I see this as, the reason I live in the village is, you know, I can walk to the Fourth of July plate, I can walk to Lampoon's, I can walk to the grocery store. You know what I mean? I don't have to drive everywhere.
But I know, I know a lot of people on the outskirts who drive in in order to walk, in order to walk, yeah.
Yep, I do.
Good.
So I, I would, back to the communication with our constituents question, I would think that another round of survey online, asking people, please comment on this. Alex, I know, has done that in the past to build up a, an idea of what people think the village should be. I think it might be a time to do that with some stimulus that we provide upfront, such as a map that shows, here's green space and all the connections that we currently have, and here's some that we're proposing might develop over time. Just to stimulate the conversation. And it does focus it then, and you don't get comments about commerce if you're showing them maps about open space, but...
It, it can help to, you know, just open-ended question, what would you like to see in the village? It can, it can help to, to present, here are some ideas. What do you like about them? What do you not like about them? That can actually be easier, I think, for, for some folks to answer.
Yeah, than to having to come up totally on their own.
A great question, a question we asked ourselves. Would you, what would you like to see this town be in 20 years? You know what I mean? See what people say.
Right, could be bullet points, could be a narrative.
Yeah, just whatever.
Could be a story about what it would be like to live here.
Be interesting to see what people say.
I've always felt that projects I've worked on, mostly architecture, have gotten better the more information I got from my clients. The more I worked with what, what it is that they wanted to see in their project. Sometimes they interfered with one another. The objectives were in conflict, but the resolution was, resulted in a better building for everybody. And I'd like this to be supported by as many people in town as possible that our proposals are really approved of.
Well, let's see, let's see how far we get with the...
So we're coming on to an hour of time.
So maybe we should move on to any other additional comments before we move on to the next?
Yeah. The only other comment I have, and then I'll leave it, is we talked about staging, and you know, we were talking about Patrick Brook is north-south, right? So I'm kind of looking at it, if you squeeze it down, you know, so you forget about everything, I guess, north, you know, where the pink line is, just stop right there. And then you go down to where, you kind of, what is built out today? You kind of look at it from that perspective and the mix. It's a little more evenly than, you know what I mean? I don't know. Just an interesting thing I looked at, you know? Is how you see, yeah, you know, we talked about, just, just, what has grown in that today? If you think of what's the tight little village, how does that look? You know?
Well, in the years I've lived here, which is, it's grown to the north, which I don't know if, why that, I guess it was because Ballast Corner got developed. I don't, you know, there was, was allowed at the time. And it just, it really spread it out, spread things out. But maybe that was because of CBU, too, that already existed then.
But it's funny, years ago, waterways, that's where you'd see all the pink.
Right.
In the grist mills.
Right, that's certainly changed.
All industry.
All industry, right.
There's more people in Heinsberg than Burlington at one time.
Right, right. And that was where the power was.
Yep.
Now we have power.
Now we wanna stay away from the rivers.
And the power lines, right?
So, one thing, though, I, I guess I'd like to ask, and I'm not, I don't know the answer. Like, we're sort of talking about all this stuff. And we're talking about sort of increasingly, you know, more access input from other people who live here with us. Does anybody have in mind a sort of a, a clear mechanism for how this ultimately sort of resolves itself?
How what resolves itself?
Like, how do we get to where we wanna go?
Well, ideally, by having pretty focused discussions, I would say. Is that what?
Us internally, with input from others?
Well, maybe after we're done with each section, we could have, you know, open it up.
It's ultimately the developers. The developers of this, these properties that are open. I mean, they're, they're gonna bring what they would like to have and that's gonna shape what happens there. I mean, I don't-
Uh, what, uh, what are you-
What am I asking?
Yeah, what are you looking for?
Uh, I'm looking for sort of a roadmap, I guess.
How we're gonna proceed?
Yeah.
Well, it's pretty much what I've been asking for, you know, for the last several meetings, is that we focus our discussion, and we've, we've done that, we have, you know, several topics we're gonna talk about. And we have focused discussions on them, and, and try to, um, as interesting as the wide-ranging is, I think, um, come up with standards surrounding each one of those areas. And maybe at, at the end of each of those topics, or, you know, then we can have a, you know, an open hearing, or just a, whatever, some, open it up to the public, but, um.
All of that result then in a town plan? Do we go back to the town plan level of statements that the Planning Commission recommends? And, and evolve that beyond where it is now? I know it's just been done.
I thought we were just, I thought we were looking at design standards, uh, and we just finished the town, town plan, so-
So is there a document that is called, these are the design standards that we insert between the town plan and-
Actually, that would be a good thing to move on to, maybe.
The zoning regulations?
Maybe that would be a good thing to move, move on to, although the next item on the agenda is reviewing village area development densities, but, um, Alex included, um, the, what our current design standards are, um, from the zoning regulations. So, as I understand it, that's what we're looking to either change or add to.
That would be where we-
Is, is that what everyone else?
Where we exercised our influence. And then eventually, looking at the zoning regulations themselves, in terms of, do they support that?
Well, that's-
Do they send us in that direction?
Was, was that not your understanding?
Yeah, no, that is, I'm just saying, isn't that how this plays out? You know, where, I, I hear you asking, how, how do we get to where we wanna go? And it seems to me that what we're talking about is the way to do that.
Am I missing something, or?
Well, maybe I'm missing something. It's more, um, me being more accustomed perhaps to a visual representation of, uh, a desired outcome, than, uh, a sort of a written description of that desired outcome.
Why can't we do both? Why can't we have a map on the wall and then have a discussion?
We can, we can. It's, uh, how do those maps get prepared, and what do they represent? Sort of, how do, how do we get that visual information, is kind of my question. I mean, if we're envisioning, say for example, uh, transform Route 116 into Heinsburg's Main Street with traffic slowed naturally via design elements, okay? How does one write, uh, something that has that happen?
And maybe that writing has more than just words, but also has illustrations. Still, a written document that can be, uh, verified and checked against as a guide, and maybe even as a regulation, if we, if we can do it.
The two interchange, I guess, you're right.
Yeah, I go back to the 116 scoping study and look at some of those ideas. There were tons of ideas there on, you know, traffic calming and gateways and, and so on.
Yeah.
But I, I don't, I don't see why they can't go together, a discussion and-
Well, I'm not suggesting they don't go together, it's sort of a question of where we access and get the sort of visual supporting information, you've just identified one source. But there are other sort of objectives here that I think aren't just solved by, uh, written information, that we, we need visual supplements, and it, the question is kind of, I think we can wordsmith and, and make stuff support these as best we can. How do we get the, uh, graphically supportive material that helps illustrate what it is we're trying to do?
I think that's a good question to find an answer for, I don't know that we have an answer right now as to how to do that. But that, that that be done, I certainly would support that. Also, not everything that we're trying to do can be shown visually. It doesn't result in a, a visual answer, so to speak.
No, I mean, I think if you, um, number four, residents able to live, work, and shop in the village without having to use motorized vehicles, I don't think that's a, needs to be represented graphically in some fashion. I'm not meaning to be obtuse.
No, I'm, I'm-
You're, you're looking at me like I'm an oxygen son of a bitch, and-
You're giving him an option.
I'm just sort of wondering how one fulfills all of what we're talking about. And I, I'm asking the question earnestly, 'cause I, I don't necessarily completely know the answer by any means.
Well, one thing Dennis said was, that I, I understand, but I, I have a little bit different view of it, and that is, the, the lands that are blank here will be developed the way the developers want to do them. You know, they'll come in with a proposal, and we'll have to work with that. My experience, at least in Boston, in terms of the dynamic of how the plan got built out, there was a lot of meetings and a lot of negotiations and a lot of discussions with developers for projects that are as big as Heinsburg, uh, and the town government. The Boston Redevelopment Authority, the mayor's office, there was a lot of discussion about what are you intending to bring to this part of Boston? What kind of commerce are you proposing here? What kind of, and, and that area of Boston, by the way, had a large sector that was assigned to industrial, to manufacturing, very close into the, to the city. It's called, your whole area is called the South End. There was, nothing happened of any significance without a lot of talking, you know, a lot of wheeling and dealing, whatever, between the government and the private developers before anything got beyond that discussion.
So, so what, what's our-
Needed to do that.
So, getting, getting back to Heinsburg, what is our, what is the first, i- is green space the first one we're gonna talk about?
I like that, I've been thinking about it, I'm just looking at the map. And some of those white areas, I think, will stay green. You know, like, where Lot 1 is, and I think behind Creekside up there, I think the residents, didn't they purchase some of that? That'll, so that'll stay green up in there. And it'd be nice to see, the white's good, 'cause it could go either way, right? But it would be nice to see what we kind of know is green, and will probably stay green. And then, how do we interconnect it? And that, you know, and then maybe define the waterways to route, you know what I mean? And that sort of defines-
Right.
Here's the interconnectivity, and then how do things go from there? You know, whether it's commercial or residential, which is, you know what I mean? What are the pathways? Which meets a lot of the bullets we have there about walking and interconnectivity and things like that.
So, could we, could we get this map just with the lot lines, without the, without the color?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Yeah, so let-
There may be one already existing.
So, is that for next, um, for our next meeting?
For the next meeting, I was gonna bring words on page on, on certain design standards, and maybe some examples from other communities that may have visual elements, but principally words on the page.
Around any particular area, or all of them?
It could, it could be, uh, I was, I was gonna look at all of them and, and try to bring in as much as possible. But it sounds like you're all very interested in looking at green space elements, so we can look to that first.
Doing them at the same time as a-
There's the buildings, Maggie, and the parcel lines.
So, so our, so our next meeting, let's, um, let's bring that and our, our, our green, we'll get the green sharpies out. We even have three different shades of greens.
Amazing.
It'll be good. That'll be good.
I, I like the idea of taking a shot at the green space and connecting elements of the green space as kind of being, uh, not as controversial as the placement of some of the other activities. And I know there's questions about how much open space is necessary, aren't we taking land off the tax rolls? That kind of questions. I think that applies more to the rest of the town, the rural area of the town, than the core, uh, village area. But that, I, I just, I think it's kind of an apple pie issue, like, who's, who's against having recreation paths and fields to play in and parks to sit in? So that it doesn't bring up, uh, irritations for people.
And should we, as part of that, pick out where our town green, now that 15 is up in the air? You know, is it Lot 1? Is it somewhere else? Is it, you know, we should-
I think, I think that's a good-
You know what I mean, that's part of the green space, and I, I would think things would connect into that, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So.
Would be crazy not to use Lot 1 since we own it.
Yep.
Yeah, and I, I think that's a clear, obvious start, you know?
And we need to, like Alex said, we need to put our money, you know, we need to start putting money into it. I mean, Lot 15 was the same thing, if we wanted that as a green space, we should have bought it.
Yeah.
We should have.
We still may.
Would have been a lot cheaper back then.
It's cheaper back then, though.
But that, but that gets awfully expensive, you know, we specify areas that we want for community center or whatever, if we have to, like, buy them 20 years in advance. That makes planning kind of-
You shouldn't, you should, you should.
Whatever we choose. You've got to bring the people in who happen to own those lots.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah.
Yeah.
Really do, I think.
I mean, if it's that important to-
Into this discussion, yeah.
I mean, shouldn't that little white area, you know, where we're talking Lot 1, shouldn't that be green? That would be green if that's what we're talking about, right?
Right.
So that's a pretty decent chunk of green amongst pink and blue, you know?
It's really nice.
But that's still another lot that has some issues with water and-
Yeah, it's wet, for sure.
Think we need, it's gonna cost money to get it to the way you-
Yeah.
It's really usable, right.
Yeah.
Probably why we own it.
Probably why the town pool is such a good idea. Just put a pond in there.
The, the, Dennis, I'm sure you remember, there was an attempt to look at the value of the, the 100% corner of that Lot 1, should the town sell that?
Right.
You know, the part that was right on the corner. And the conclusion was, no, it's not worth it, for how much we could sell that for and what we would lose. Let's keep the whole thing.
Absolutely.
I, in, in terms of my experience in, in the big city, in Boston, they, the city did go out and buy land that they knew they weren't gonna do anything on, on or with for years because of the location of that piece and how it fit into the overall plan. So, yes, sometimes you do that. I don't know whether small villages like Heinsburg have the wherewithal to do that, but if we at least bring people along with the overall idea, maybe we can get support.
Yeah, can I color on that map, or is that map a?
You can color on any of these, right? We can make a copy of any of these, yeah, color on.
I just wanna color green on that one.
All right. Grab the magic mark there, there's a whole bunch of ones, so, yeah.
Big green space right up in Ridge's property right there.
What was about the township?
Where the big blue is.
Right behind here too, where the, the property right here, it's a duplex, is it called the duplex, Alex? When that was up for sale, I said to the select board, you should buy that, and everybody looked at me like I-
The one that's right here on the road.
I felt we should have purchased that, and it was not a lot of money at the time.
Yeah.
Like, 70,000 or something, and it was like, I wish we had-
Who is that, the, the earth-moving guys, right?
The what?
The earth-moving-
No, no, I'm talking about right here that touches us. It's a little duplex, not all the way to the corner.
Oh, not, not where the road connection is.
Right, the closest one, but both of them would have been nice too, but the first one.
Is that what it is, Phase 2?
Yes, yes, Heinsburg Center, Phase 2, and that white space.
Does that already have water allocated, or no?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's on hold too. I was just wondering when that was gonna happen.
But behind all the houses there, that's all green now too, right? Isn't that all conserved?
Yeah, didn't these folks in here buy like this little plot here?
They bought some back there, yeah, behind.
I don't know if they, would it be that whole section? Yeah?
Is it all that?
So is it safe to draw green up to here?
Well, it's not, um-
Public, though, is it?
It's not community space.
Some of it, you know, some of it owned by breath-
Right, the map that you're drawing on, green indicates community facilities. So, the map that you wanna see, which this map is not that map, the map you wanna see shows areas of actual green space, and maybe areas that have restrictions that will remain as-is. That's different, you know, from what, from what this map shows.
Your land's not all community space, is it?
No.
It's just conservative, but it's, yeah.
There was public trail, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really, this is all, all the trails and stuff, that's all public in this space.
So, maybe the, that map and the aerial photo kind of are on display at our meetings that we can refer to. Yeah.
Right.
Put them up on the wall. Yep. All right. Further comments, are we ready to, to move on? Um, I don't know how much, um, the next item, the review of village area development densities, I don't know, uh, how much of a discussion?
So Ralph asked for some summary of existing and proposed development densities in the village area. And I started by trying to just create a simple table, you know, for each district. What's the existing development density, what's the, what's the potential? Uh, quickly realizing that the existing development densities, at least when measured by residential units, which there are different ways to measure it, is so low that, that doesn't, it's not meaningful. There's not a meaningful way to compare those. So, what I put in your, on Dropbox for you to look at in the packet were some of the materials from the Village Visualization Project that showed density maps of different districts, especially Village Northwest, Village Northeast, um, and that area of what's possible, uh, along with the calculations that we did for the Quinn property, which is the large undeveloped chunk of land in the Residential 1 District. And so in addition to that, there's, uh, there's some materials that you saw previously showing visual examples of certain neighborhoods in the village and what those effective density values are. Uh, and a couple of documents from back when the village growth area zoning was done in the first place, back in 2008, ahead of the 2009 adoption of the new zoning, where the Planning Commission 10 years ago was trying to get a sense of what are the build-out potentials and, um, so, so that's in there as well. So I, I, I don't have a, a clear and concise answer to the question, but I have a bunch of visuals to help you get a sense of that. So if there's something more you'd like, I can try to crunch numbers, as I said, I, what I, what I thought you wanted, I started doing it, and then I thought, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not a real comparison, existing, proposed, 'cause the existing densities are so, um-
I think it's really, it's really helpful to, because, because it is, I mean, our town is a, you know, a series of- a series of different neighborhoods, really. I think it's, it's helpful and will be a good, a good resource as we have these discussions. Did you have other?
Nope. Yes. Yep. Well, it was, it was useful, so.
Yeah.
I've, I've been kind of feeling bad for a while about the fact that the older part of our village grew up over decades within a time which I think there was more a general acceptance or, or, I'd say acceptance of sort of building shapes and, and materials and colors that brought a lot of consistency, not identical, certainly not cookie cutter, but all of that happened over time, and that's not how things happen now. I, I'm feeling better about what, what we're going through is now the natural process of how a town grows and a town changes, different than in the 1800s and the 1700s. And it's not gonna end up looking like that. I think to, to, to try to make it look like how it grew over time is like a theme park, not a, a life-created-at-the-moment village for, for 6,000 people to live in. So, I'm, I'm more comfortable with our process and didn't happen that way in the past. There wasn't a planning commission sitting back in 1752. Some surveyors came through and put a lot of lines down on, on the ground. That certainly was a beginning. That, that and the fact that the first wagon through went in this direction and that started becoming the road wasn't because it was the best place. What, the, the road up north, I love the story about the road on 116. Instead of it going straight like it used to, it takes this big curve around the east side of Shelburne Pond because it turned out that area was so wet that the roads sank. And they had to build a different place.
Comments, that's prevailed.
Dislike of wet feet. All right. And then five, the, the village area design standards on the agenda? Again, I, it, it seems just to show us what we've got.
This is just for your information, I was anticipating a lot of discussion. It's just, this is what we have today. We've been talking, not just about design standards, about a variety of things, but most recently about design standards. And I wanted, before you started looking at new, look at what we have because we do have design standards, both for the site and for buildings in particular. So, these are them, they're compiled, if it helps to look at them in one place rather than have to hunt through the zoning regulations to find them all.
Thank you so much for that.
And just take, take a look in advance of the next meeting.
Yeah.
And as you can tell, and this is relevant to Ralph's comment, all the existing design standards, there are no pictures. Maybe they don't need to be pictures with these, but I, I, I get the impression that our new design, our new and improved design standards should have some pictures, some graphic illustrations and the like. So, we'll see how we do on that, but there are the existing ones.
Yeah. Should we have a quiz for our next meeting?
No.
Isn't it, isn't it?
You're, you're, you're not in fourth grade, all of you can be trusted to read. There's only four or five pages.
We'll do a visual multiple choice.
Or you have to bring something from home and tell a story about it.
Yes, yep. Show and tell, yeah, Legos. We'll have a Lego.
Action figures.
Lego, Legos and action figures next meeting. Yeah, that'll be for 116. Who wants to bring the? Yeah, okay. All right. Minutes. Minutes.
Didn't see anything. Badly stated, looked, looked good.
Any changes or additions?
No, I thought like this.
Motion?
Aye.
You what?
We're voting, we're voting aye.
Second. Aye.
All in favor? And everyone, everyone was here? Okay, awesome.
Anybody go on tomorrow night?
Yes.
Yes.
Totally, the Water Matters Workshop is tomorrow night.
It's, it's seven, right?
Seven.
Seven.
And the speakers have changed a little bit. Unfortunately, Joe Colangelo, our former town administrator, who is the town manager in Shelburne, but not for very much longer, he's took a job out of state. He's not gonna be presenting, so somebody from the Agency of Natural Resources is coming to talk about that same topic. And Shelburne's example, just, it won't be the Shelburne Town Manager. And I think there's one other change in the cast of characters. Jessica Louiso, who works for Milo McBroom and has done some work in Heinsberg and is also the chair of the Planning Commission in South Burlington, who's gonna speak. And she, I think, broke both her legs. So, her coworker, Roy Schiff, who's done a lot of work in town as well, will be speaking instead. So, a, a few changes, but the agenda's basically the same. The stories to be told are still the same stories, just a couple different people. The only other announcement I had was that today I got a, a notice from the Nature Conservancy related to a permit application they've applied for, not in Heinsberg, but in Moncton, for the property that's basically on the Heinsberg-Moncton Town Line, the Raven Ridge property, and some access improvements they're gonna be making, boardwalk and trail improvements and new driveway cut and stuff like that. It was addressed to you, so I'm letting you know that we received this and the description of what they're doing is here. I, I don't think it has any impact on Heinsberg, but if you're interested, there's the, there's the information.
That's not online.
No, I can definitely scan it and email it out to you. It's just that I got it today, so I figured I'd bring it to the meeting. So, if anybody's interested and you wanna see it that way, I can just do that, send it out in the morning.
Put me on the list.
I'll just send it all to all of you.
You recite that we would talk about green space connectivity next time?
Yes, although you were just.
Yeah, so, so the design standard palette that I wanted to put in front of you next time will have a green tint to it.
And the Trails Committee's done some work on that for the greater town. I don't remember how much of it would apply to the village, but.
Well, yeah, for connectivity for sure.
They've been pretty focused on the village and the rest of the town, so I think it all, it all interplays. So, just be warned, you're gonna, one of your materials for the next meeting is gonna be our existing official map because on that map, we do identify a lot of these things already. So, I think the mapping that you're talking about doing at the next meeting can be informed by the mapping we already have and then, you know, add to it or start with a blank slate, but use that as something to reference, you know, that sort of thing.
So, maybe we can talk about which maps to bring. And I, I love that you've brought this up, and I think you're absolutely right. There, we should have maps up here every single meeting. It's so, it's so helpful. And that, the Trails map would be a good one and the, and that one that you, that you showed just with a lot, lot line to it, without the. Yeah, without the, the color, so we could.
No, no other comments.
Bring our, we'll give Jeff the green. You'll have power over the green sharpie.
The green, the wide, the wide one, the big nib, the big nib.
I'm moving up in the wall.
Good. Anything else?
I, I'll say one, one more thing. The official map, I think, is a tool that I'd like to see it used more and made more valid, more strong in terms of it affecting development. That it's, we, we kind of shy away from it, saying, well, it doesn't have the teeth in it that we need like the zoning ordinance does or the subdivision ordinance does. But I, I think the official map can be a much stronger piece that we use. And I know it doesn't have a long history of being used that way in, in Vermont, but I think it is a tool that allows that to happen. So, it's really like a master plan in my mind. And it has, should have the, the strength and the commitment of the town and, and the language to back it up so that when you're meeting with a developer, you say, this is what our official map indicates. This is the rules that you'll need to play by when you come into town. And I, I think we, we haven't used it that way, I don't think, in, in the past. We've been kind of backing away from saying, no, this is, these are the rules. That's all.
All right then, motion to adjourn? Great, thank you, everyone, and.
Thanks, Maggie.
Thank you, Maggie.
Are we off?